Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call tonight's meeting. Go ahead and call it to order while we're getting a couple of bugs straightened out. We'll have the pledge of allegiance and Vice Mayor Barbara McGray has been excused tonight. She'll be with us, but she'll be with us virtually. So let's have the pledge of allegiance and we'll get going.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, Jack, it's good to see you, sir. There he is, there he is. Okay, this is the situation that we have tonight. We've got two council members that are joining us virtually. We have no one signed up for public session. And the first thing I need to do is, oh, one thing that we'll be doing tonight. Anything we vote on, because two of our council members are virtual tonight, we have to have a roll call vote. And Travis will poll each council member individually and their votes will be recorded. That's what you do when you have a members of the council that are virtual. And while we're getting underway here, I want to introduce our new fire chief, Ben Orman. Ben, we're finally glad that you got here. It was quite a trip and we're so glad to have you with us and I want to welcome you aboard. Anything you'd like to tell us about yourself or whatever?
I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity and it's been great to get back to North Carolina and I'm really excited to get started to work. Everyone I've met so far has been great and I'm sure we'll do well together.
We will. Thank you. Any of the council members have anything?
Welcome.
Yeah, glad to have you.
Glad to have you.
Absolutely. All right, let's talk about adoption of the town council agenda. Does anybody have anything they want to add or subtract to tonight's agenda as presented?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if we could add just a couple items.
Yes, ma'am.
The first item if we could add would be under 4E budget amendments. Your finance officers passed a couple out regarding CARES Act funding and some others. That could be just a consent agenda item. The second one would be to put 7B under new business discussion on the police cruiser. Chief Harrell will be presenting that. And then the third topic would be under new business closed session and I'm going to let Town Attorney John Henning Jr. guide you on that.
And I'll give you a more specific motion when we get to that point, Mr. Mayor. It'll be for attorney-client privilege, real property, and also to discuss economic development incentives.
Gotcha. And how we'll handle that when we go into a closed session? Any of the visitors, news media, you may either go outside or you may go upstairs where we'll have you up there in the conference room. The reason being is since we're having to go virtual, we still have to be in here because of the camera setup and all of that. Y'all okay with that? Or your other choices, you can call us in the morning and find out if we did anything, took any action, whatever y'all would like to do. Bobby? Hi Bobby.
Hi.
Are you okay?
Yeah, I'll stay.
Okay, all right. So moving on now. We did not vote on the document.
Motion to approve amended agenda.
Yeah, okay. Let's have a second. Okay, any further discussion? Travis, you want to call the roll call?
Yeah. Councilmember Horton, how do you vote? Can you hear me?
Yeah, he's on.
We have to be able to hear him, I'm sorry to say.
Can you yell, Jack?
He's muted.
Oh, he's muted.
Mm-hmm. Can you?
Jack, we think you're muted. Do you see your, there you go.
Yes.
Yeah, gotcha.
Councilmember Lewis?
Aye.
Councilmember, or Vice Mayor McGray?
She's not on yet.
Okay. Councilmember Mashburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Colpepper?
I've heard it.
Councilmember Collins?
Aye.
Unanimous.
That's it, I guess. Okay, so it passed. All right, the approval of the consent agenda, I think you've had, all had a chance to look at consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented tonight? We have the motion. Second, any further discussion? Travis, if you will. Mr. Talan?
Councilmember Horton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGray is not on yet. Councilmember Mashburn? Councilmember Colpepper?
Aye.
Councilmember Collins?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I'm not sure what kind of meeting this reminds me of.
Blazing new territory.
Sort of like the British Parliament in a way. Okay, all right. And nobody signed up for public session, so we'll move on to old business. Discussion on early retirement for law enforcement officers. Counselor, I think you're up on this. And Mr. Talan?
Yes.
Who wants to begin?
I can.
Okay.
Let's let Vice Mayor McGray.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor and Council, Ms. Vice Mayor McGray is going to be joining us via phone call. Ms. McGray, can you hear us?
Barbara, can you hear us?
Yes, but can I hear it on my regular phone and not just on my watch? That's why I'm hearing it on.
Yeah.
Because I don't know how long it's going to last.
Would you like me to go ahead?
Please, yes, yes, if you would.
So you know, last month, we talked about the potential of having an LEO buyout pursuant to general statute 143, 166, 43. This would come at 25 years. Law enforcement officer has the opportunity to retire early at that point via that law. What I've presented you tonight is just some different wording. Basically, this would offer an employee that is interested in early retirement and this potential buyout. The way we've written it is a year salary upfront. That would service their buyout. And then we also, in consideration of Councilmember Lewis's questions about insurance, did go ahead and add wording that will allow an employee to continue to receive coverage for the employee only. So no family or anything like that, but the employee only. Either until they reach Medicare eligibility or if they become covered under another plan, say if they took a job with somebody else that had. And then they would be required to notify the Town of Franklin so we could drop them. That's really the nuts and bolts of it. If you would like me to go sort of back over what we talked about the last meeting, I'll be glad to do that. But other than that, that's, the policy in front of you is what I'm presenting tonight.
So Mr. Mayor and council members, I'm comfortable with this language with one addition that I want to suggest in just a second. The thing about insurance, and Travis and I talked through this some, that I think is important to keep in mind, there's, well, there's two things. One, it's not, you should not be in a position of somebody double dipping, so to speak, where they're going to take their early buyout from you and go work for another employer and then get some, you know, get their insurance covered there, too. There's no double coverage. You're telling them their, your coverage is going to end when you go get picked up by somebody else or you become picked up by the government because you become Medicare eligible. It also is kind of a sunk cost anyway. You know, we were talking about whether or not it is something somebody would, would the town be able to stop paying somebody's insurance because they did take advantage of that offer? It's probably not worth it because it's kind of a sunk cost. If you're at 25 years and you don't get this offer and you work another five years for the town, the town would have covered their insurance for that period of time anyway. So with what you're able to save in terms of the salary now, you might as well offer those couple more years of coverage for insurance anyway, if that makes sense. The one thing that I think you probably should add back in here that I think we've talked about before is setting a date certain by which they're supposed to let you know if they want to apply for an offer so that your manager could work it into your budget cycle every year. And so I would just say add back in the February 1st deadline to kind of apply. But overall, I still think this is a worthy thing to look at. It's completely voluntary on both sides. You all might as well look at who all's interested, who all in your management thinks behooves both parties to maybe make them an offer. And at budget time, you'll get to look at a number that says how much you're looking to offer and how much you might be saved based on that. Barbara, you okay?
Yeah.
We dropped, sorry. So that'd be my recommendation, just to go ahead and pass it so you can get a look at this process in this upcoming budget year.
With the adding back of the February 1st notice to manager?
Yes.
Deadlines that it can be put in the following budget cycle?
Yes, sir.
Not naming names, but do we have anybody that'd be eligible for this on the horizon?
Yeah, fairly close, yes.
Several or a couple or?
I'd say even around four or five, yeah.
Back to the insurance thing, didn't we talk about, or maybe even pass, my memory's a little foggy on this, but some sort of a planned scheme of having 20 years, 25 years, 30 years of a retirement and an insurance payout? Didn't we talk about that?
We have talked about it, but we have not.
That's not passed yet, but that would also apply to this, which means somebody with 25 years that we bought them out for earlier retirement, they would qualify for that anyway, right?
You would probably have to add in wording of which way you'd want, which preference you would have for that tiered coverage?
Yes.
Or for this coverage?
Okay.
So that's something that we follow through with that and we've talked about it. It's pretty good to, no, we've talked, that's something that we've discussed at Word of Intervue, so that's what.
But that is, coming down the pipe, it probably will get brought up in the near future, but...
It could be, yeah, if the town council would like to look at that aspect. So I think at that time, we would just need to probably add in some wording to differentiate.
And see how that fits in with that.
Yes, yes, sir.
So instead of a formula, it's whatever their annual salary is at that point?
Yes.
And it'd be a year's salary?
Okay, any other, Jack, Ms. McGray, any comment? We're in discussion.
No, this is all voluntary, it's not compelled to deliver. There's an option that you're allowing them to participate in with, I think the manager mentioned the last meeting, that this could have a net benefit effect on the financial aspects of the town. So I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. Ms. McGray? I don't know if she can even hear me.
Barbara, can you hear us?
I can hear some of what y'all are saying. Yeah.
Do you have any comments or questions about the law enforcement early buyout policy?
No, I think it's a good idea, but that's all I know.
Okay, that being said, in the no further discussion, Counselor, you want to make the, tell us what the motion might include?
Yes, sir. It would simply be a motion to adopt the early buyout policy as a part of your personnel policy as presented with the addition of the February 1st deadline for application.
Okay, you'll...
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Mashburn makes the motion?
I'll second it.
And Mr. Colpepper seconds it. Any further discussion?
And no insurance is involved in this whatsoever, health and coverage?
No, there is.
They're not forfeiting, they're taking the buyout?
It's not involved in that, they're not losing it.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Further questions? Mr. Talan, sir?
Okay. Councilmember Horton, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGray?
Ms. McGray?
Yeah, I'm not sure, went to Councilmember Lewis.
Counselor, can you see if you can ask her for her vote?
Councilmember McGray, do you, how do you vote?
Me?
Yes.
Yes, I vote yes.
Okay. Councilmember Lewis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mashburn?
Aye.
Councilmember Colpepper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
All right, that passes. Discussion on parades and demonstrations ordinance. Mr. Henning, you want to present the item and then we'll go around and see if there's any discussion on it.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. This is essentially the same ordinance that I presented at your December meeting where we sort of talked through the progression of review of this that started with events over the summer that got us looking at just whether or not there was any need for revision in this ordinance. There was some need for it to come up to snuff with several federal court decisions. Again, not in any way that I'm concerned it was ever misapplied under what would be applicable law. I just want to make sure that, you know, we have the language in there that we need. What I have done since then is appears in blue in this packet and it's in three places that I'll briefly run through. The definition of social event or festival at Vice Mayor McGray's suggestion, I've added in cultural events to social events and festivals. And then if you scroll all the way down to the very last section about exceptions, that's dealt with under a new subsection F. It says if it's social events or festivals, it doesn't come under this particular ordinance. There may be a different way and it's through your town manager and a permission or application process that may include, you know, street closures and that sort of thing that comes to the council for approval. And then finally, I think it was Councilmember Mashburn's suggestion, we made clear, we're not trying to control what the county does with the free speech area. And so there's a new subsection E here that says if county controls or owns a piece of property in town limits, we're not trying to apply this ordinance within that area. So that clarification is made there. Otherwise, the language is basically the same as it was last time. And again, I think you do need to get this ordinance upgraded at some point and up to snuff. I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Any questions, Counselor? Yes, sir.
I can't find it right now, but there's something about just a spontaneous eruption of people wanting to go downtown. Like, let's say something crazy happens on January 6th or January 20th and me and 12 people want to run downtown and start hooting and hollering.
Yes.
How does that apply to us?
So the part you're talking about is in 95.56 where it talks about whether permits are required or not. And it's in that lower paragraph that says participation is, that's unlawful is illegal, obviously. But the last sentence there, a permit's not required if a parade picket line or group demonstration is spontaneous in response to unforeseeable or immediate events or if the parade picket line constitutes a small gathering that poses no threat to safety nor to accessibility of streets. So essentially, it puts it in the hands of your police chief and law enforcement to say, this is small, spontaneous, never balloons into anything bigger. It's not something that causes any harm, you know, poses any threat to anybody's safety. We're not going to crack heads over it. And so it would, I think the kind of thing you described would be exempt and there wouldn't be any consequence.
Exactly. It really is protecting the original intent of First Amendment right to peacefully assemble.
Yes.
Any further questions? If not, we need to vote on this. Counselor, you want to give us a rundown of proper motion?
Yes, sir. If the council's ready to move on it, I would say just a motion to adopt the ordinance as amended.
Any further discussion? Someone want to make a motion?
Who to adopt?
All right, let's have a second. We have a second. Any further discussion? Jack, Ms. McGray, anything you want to say on this before we move on and take a vote?
I want, something I'd like to say in the official discharge of enforcement is found to the town, which is our typical, or not, is that.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Mr. Talan, sir?
All right. Councilmember Horton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGray? Okay. Councilmember Mashburn?
Aye.
Councilmember Colpepper?
Yep.
Councilmember Collins?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Okay, that passes. Okay, moving on. New business, discussion on strategic planning meeting. Madam Manager, you want to brief us on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. I just wanted to kind of put this on there, something to start thinking about since it is 2021. Not looking for a vote tonight. We can bring it back up at your February meeting, but if it's something that this board's interested in and doing a strategic planning session like we did last year, just maybe start thinking about that. If it's something you want to do, if it's something you're not comfortable doing because of the pandemic, we can bring this back up at our February meeting. I just kind of wanted to plant that seed so you guys can start thinking. And then at our February meeting, we might can have some further discussion on if it is something you want, some dates, times, locations, and what you want that retreat to look like, so.
I would like to just say that it's something I think that we would benefit from doing if we're so moved to do it. I don't know what the future holds for next couple of months, but hopefully we will have the vaccine and people will be more comfortable and we can start getting back to normal. Anybody have anything they want to say about?
I think we should do it. I mean, the reception has been positive last year. I mean, nothing got done towards what we set out because the world fell apart shortly thereafter. But yeah, even if we had to do it in some big auditorium where we could be very physically distant and just yell at each other, not meanly, but yell across the room like the Smoky Mountain Center Performing Arts or a similar location where we could actually talk to each other, I think it's a good idea. I think it's always good to hear how the other people are talking and thinking outside of just this monthly meeting.
Let me suggest, based on what I'm hearing, Madam Manager, could we not send out, say, some selections of possible times to do it and let's see what might be agreeable and hopefully, like I said, some of us will be vaccinated by that time and that might change the whole perspective.
And we may think of a larger venue to where it is much more open air and ventilated so that...
Yeah.
So what I can do is at our February meeting, I'll come back with some dates and times and some location suggestions.
Okay. And there used to be, and I think they're still doing it, I don't know if they're back on track or not, but the League of Municipalities will send you a, what's the word I'm looking for?
Moderator?
Facilitator?
Facilitator, exactly. So we'll even look at that if that's agreeable with the board so we can get this underway. Okay? All right, the next item is a vehicle issue and we'll call on Chief Harrell.
Everybody here be okay without removing their mask?
Yeah.
Okay. First, I'd like to take the opportunity to recognize our K-9 handler and Officer Eli Kirkland, our K-9 Toro, and the assistance from Sergeant Clay Bryson with Lake County Sheriff's Office and a recent certification that they have received, which is several months ahead of schedule. So they were recently certified nationally for search and rescue, narcotic search and... excuse me. Narcotic search and then tracking. And they received those certifications last week. So they, like I said, accelerated through the program very well. All right. A next order of business, obviously, is the car that I sent everybody information on earlier today. I apologize that this came in that way, but I have no control over it. So I provided that information for you and if there are any questions, I'm prepared to field those at this time.
Run it by me again.
Sir?
I haven't seen it.
Okay. On Christmas Eve, Sergeant Stahl with our agency for providing safety and coverage for a stranded motorist on 441 North at the Dow Mountain intersection. As he was shielding the stranded motorist and the vehicle during the snow and sleet storm, he had his emergency equipment activated and he went back to the vehicle to make some calls for further assistance, at which time another passerby lost control of their vehicle and rear ended the back of his patrol car within it. Fortunately, no parties were injured from either vehicle. However, the car is completely lost with the equipment, the majority of equipment inside. So the Highway Patrol has worked the investigation of the accident and found the other party to be the contributor or negligence. And their insurance company has become involved, which is GEICO. I have been in touch with them throughout and they are, you know, we've been working at basically a snail pace thanks to holidays, but they have told me some steps that they requested us to take. We have taken those steps. I've also been in touch with Tim Garner, our insurance provider for the town, to get his counsel. And he agrees with every step that we've taken so far. And they have now asked for that vehicle to be relocated to their lot, what they call their lost salvage yard in Bunkham County, and it is prepared to be released. That being said, we've got to replace the lost car and the equipment that it contained. I have done a search locally and nationally and have come up with one car that is available for us in Kentucky, which just by coincidence is the same location that we just purchased our last two new Durango's. This Dodge Charger is several thousand dollars less than these Durango's and it is still an all-wheel drive and produces a poor oil environment. That vehicle, we are receiving a formal quote, is between 28,000 to 29,000, the bare bones of the car itself. I've spoken with finance, I've spoken with the town manager to include between the 28 and 9, the reason that is kind of a broad number is obviously the sales tax entitled in PAG. In addition to that, as everyone knows, there will be an equipment outfit, all lights, the sirens, the cage, and things like that that need to go in the vehicle for daily operations. Those things can range anywhere from $10,000 to $12,000, depending upon, again, what it is we're going to have to replace once we have, even though we have removed lights from the old car and get them into the new car, to see that they're going to work correctly. Once that happens, then we'll have a better idea. We will not go above, but we could come down as far as the cost that it would be out of pocket if you all agree to buy on the front end this vehicle and us seek our restitution back from GEICO on the back end. These vehicles are very hard to come by. If I ordered one today, it's not going to be here till March or April at the very earliest if I get on a waiting list. If we get this one, which just so happens this dealership out of Kentucky gets several hundred at a time or an agency apparently nearby, I'm assuming maybe Lexington, they have usually a couple left over from time to time. This is one of those. So we are trying to secure this vehicle with your approval so we can move forward without having to wait much longer because we have nothing else for a daily operator to last until then.
Okay.
Yes. The car that got wrecked, was it an old one or a new one?
It was a 2017 Ford Taurus.
And it was subject to being rotated out. How many more years did it have life on it?
It still had several more years life because it only had about 31,000 miles on it.
Police cars, you know, you assume they get wrecked a lot of times. In the 27 years I've been involved, I've never had a request like this that we go ahead and just go buy a new one and then pay back once we, I mean, I don't know what we've done in the past, maybe we haven't dealt with it that often, but it seems to be like a case of first impression to me and it shouldn't be because, you know, squad cars are by the very nature subject to being damaged. Even if they're not totally wrecked, they'd be put in the shop for repairs for a few weeks and we don't... And we don't, we don't go and replace them then.
If it could be repaired, it would be, but obviously it's been declared total. We don't have another daily driver to reassign to this officer on a regular basis for operational reasons.
Without sharing a car?
Without sharing a car.
And I don't know, Councilmember Collins, I don't know that we ever had one where it was the other driver's insurance that was... That may be the difference. I don't, I can't...
What is the difference here?
Well, just that if it's, the town's making a claim on its own policy for something that happened within the course of its own business, I think that probably concludes a lot faster than knowing that we've got to deal with the other insurer, the other motorist, you know, coverage and getting the best result out of them. That's my guess.
What, yeah, that, the next question is, what is the result we're going to get? I mean, how are we going to get a full replacement car or...
We obviously figured out that as a gift. So that's going to be something with, again, with your direction that we would ask Mr. Henning to get involved in, in order to negotiate with GEICO to make sure that we do get what we deserve.
But we've got to have a car.
I've been to several body shops and they would give me their little black book value of the car, and it does not come near what's got to be replaced for the car. So that's where we need to get our town attorney involved to negotiate that price because the car's value far exceeds what's on paper.
Okay, any further questions?
So if this was a situation where the car was not total damaged, but damaged to where it's going to be out of commission for a month or so, would we be, would it be the same request?
We would, if it was our responsibility to try to repair this car, based on the question you're asking, we would be trying to basically piecemeal different vehicles for the officer until we could get a, you know, repaired home. Which would be an incredible inconvenience.
Madam Manager, does this require a motion to proceed or...
Certainly up to the board. So based on, because most of this information just kind of came through today, a lot of it did as far as cost. Based on the discussion and will of the board, if you want to entertain Chief Harold's request, it would be, what was your total, Chief? For a replacement car?
Forty-five. And that was just not, that was not just the car. Forty-five five.
So what that would be is if it is the will of the board, it'd be to take forty, forty-five?
Five.
Five.
No more.
No more, out of your fund balance to go ahead and purchase this car that he has located with contingent and understanding that legal would be involved to try and get as much as we can from the damaged vehicle that's now been totaled out. And whatever we do collect, that would come back as a budget amendment to the board, and that would then be requested for the board to put that back into your retainer, or your fund balance.
I have another question just quickly. And I guess a lot of the equipment from the other car, because the Taurus won't fit in the Challenger or it was damaged, so...
That's correct. We don't know, the tanks would definitely not fit, obviously, because of the completely different body style. We tried to find other Ford Tauruses, and they were worth over $34,000. That's, I mean, that's just the cost of the new car. The 2021s obviously changed, well, not obviously, but everyone, but they have changed the body styles, and they have changed a lot of tweaking on those vehicles. Certain notifications, I won't go into here, but it's caused that price to go up.
But there is a chance this will help us in our future rotation because we'll have an extra new car versus a 2017?
I've spoken with the manager about this. It will help the current fleet schedule that has kind of been out of kilter. I can't explain, but it will help us get that realigned.
This doesn't have anything to do with purchasing the new car, but I did have a question based on Mr. Culpepper. That equipment that you were able to remove, but maybe, did you remove everything, all the equipment, out of it?
We removed everything that we felt like that we could repurpose.
Okay. So there's not anything that you can remove that is, might be sold to someone else or something like that? That was just...
We have done that. If it will not basically go into a new vehicle, then we have removed it to see if it could be sold possibly to another agency on good deals, which we do call.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Yes, sir.
So the cost bare bones between the Dodge and the Ford is about how many thousand dollars difference?
Several thousand.
Five?
Yes. Approximately, yes, sir.
And the cost to outfit the Charger is about how much?
Between 10,000 and 12,000.
But if we bought the Taurus, couldn't we use the equipment we got?
I'm sorry.
Would I come out better by getting the Taurus and being able to repurpose the equipment that we took off the Taurus that was totaled?
Not likely. Because, again, we're taking a leap of faith to think that some of this equipment that we've taken off of this old cars is actually still going to be operable when we plug it in and put it into a new vehicle regardless. So that's just kind of a, you know, best guess.
Was the cage damaged?
Sir?
Was the cage damaged in the crash? So you wouldn't even be able to use it even in another Taurus then, correct?
We're not for certain yet.
But if it was damaged, it probably not going to fit.
Yeah. Talking to the installer, if you will, and everything, he looked at it, and we would have to replace what's known as feet and some different pieces on it to make it work for a Charger, which would be only to which is buying a new cage.
Okay. Other questions? All right. Somebody want to make a motion to proceed with what the chief has presented tonight about replacing a wrecked car? Have a motion on the floor? I have a second.
If I can just clarify, I think...
Yes, you may, sir.
What the management needs to know is that that's a motion to appropriate funds as presented from the fund balance.
My motion's based upon the, what Ms. Woodard...
Forty-five thousand, five hundred, correct, Chief?
Yes, ma'am. That is the car, the equipment, and upfitting labor costs.
With the understanding that what we get from insurance settlement will come back to the board in a budget amendment to be reappropriated back into that fund balance.
That was my motion.
Do we need to add authorizing John to negotiate with GEICO on that?
I mean, I'm going to look out for your interests.
Why get the big butt there?
Okay. Mr. Talat, sir.
Okay.
All the rolls.
Did we have a second?
Yes.
Sorry. Councilmember Horton?
Yeah, I vote in favor of it, Mr. Mayor. If you're going to wait to get a new car, you'd like to get one by April of next year, of this year. So if we're going to have a list for us that's going to be able to do the job, we've got to have the equipment operate with, and this seems like at the time the most viable alternative. So I would vote in favor of it.
Councilmember Lewis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCray?
I can't get my, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I, you know, we just have to do it. And I think you're very, very fortunate to find one to close in Kentucky.
So that's yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Mashburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Culpepper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay. All right. Moving on to, we, excuse me. We need a motion to go, do we have anything else before we go make a motion to go into closed session?
Let me just mention one thing to you, Mr. Mayor. We distributed to you all copies, and I should have mentioned this in connection with the parades and demonstrations ordinance. Another part of the discussion that we had about that last meeting was your policy about management of the gazebo and reservations. This is a copy of what management has already been doing for you. So, and Vice Mayor McCray and Madam Horton, we will get you copies of this too, just to begin to look at and think about it. I'm not sure you actually need a policy or need to revamp anything. This is how management is already managing that property. So just for review and discussion.
I don't think there's been any question about it. Anytime we've used this policy, it's worked, it's worked well.
So having said that, Mr. Mayor, the reasons for the closed session are the ones given GS 143-18.1183 under, I'm sorry, 11A, under 83 to consult with the town attorney in order to preserve attorney-client privilege, A4 to discuss matters relating to location or expansion of industries or other businesses, and A5 to instruct the fellow body staff in negotiating agents concerning position to be taken on the behalf of the town in negotiating the price or the material terms of the contract for real property.
Okay. I need a motion to go into a closed session based on the statutes which allow us to do so.
So moved.
I have a motion, I have a second. Mr. Talat?
Okay. Councilmember Horton? Councilmember Lewis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCray? Councilmember Mashburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Culpepper?
Aye.
And Councilmember Collins?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay. For the members of the fourth estate, if you want to stick around wherever we can set up a place, it'll be fine. If not, just give us a call in the morning, and we'll be low down if we take any kind of action. Is that okay, Jack?
That's good.
That's all right with you, okay.
Are we staying by where we are now?
Yeah.
One day I'm going to bring in my nation jar full of white liquor that looks better. It starts sanitizing the infant. Okay, what are we going to do now? I'll make some announcements, I guess.
The only action out of closed session we need, Mr. Mayor, was a motion to approve the resolution concerning real estate documents authorizing you and the town manager to execute on behalf of the town.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Ms. Mashburn has made a motion, Mr. Lewis has seconded. Mr. Talat, I'm sorry, sir.
I took what you said. You've got a couple on the second line you put that up.
Okay. Okay. You want to poll the board?
Are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Horton?
Hey, Jack? He raised his hand.
Okay. Councilmember Lewis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCray?
I heard it.
Councilmember Mashburn? Councilmember Culpepper?
I don't like it, but I understand it.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay. It passes unanimously. All right. Is there anything else we have to act on before we move on? Okay. Announcements, we will be closed Monday, January 18th in observance of Martin Luther King Day. Real quick, let's go around the table. Mr. Lewis, you got, or Madam Manager?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Bishop? John? Mr. Lewis? Ms. Mashburn? Mr. Culpepper?
Yeah. From the holidays, I ran into some folks with the local disc golf club. And I mentioned that, you know, we've always talked about maybe putting some goals up at Wittenmeyer. They said they would be interested, they would even lay out the course for us and talk to us about if we wanted to pursue that. So I'll talk to Mike and you about that and see if we can get anywhere.
I've reached out to Nick Morgan's mom about nine and a half ago and tell him to try to get up with me after the holiday drove over.
I talked to Nick and Jacob and Kyle, and they, they're excited, yeah. And they would really like to see it happen.
Okay. Are they willing to put the goals and all?
They're willing to put the goals in. They would like a little bit of help with some funding on the goals. They said it may cost $4,000 for goals. I don't know if we have that in our red budget or not, but we could probably privately fundraise it if we didn't.
Mr. Collins, sir?
No, I'm to do it.
Okay. I want to raise the motion to close this meeting, which was presented under extraordinary conditions tonight. So moved.
Second.
All in fact, Mr. Talat?
Councilmember Horton? Councilmember Lewis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCray? Councilmember Mashburn? Councilmember Culpepper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Jack. Thank you, Barbara.
Anybody ever tried to drink this?